Order. This is a public hearing for the consideration of annexation agreement concerning the property located along Bryn Mawr Avenue at Illinois Route 83, which is approximately seventeen point seven acres. C.H. Realty eight dash TDCI Chicago Bryn Mawr LLC, the property owner petitioned the city to annex the property. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be exhibit A. The property is legally described in the legal notice. The property bears the current common addresses. Seven N zero eight zero Pine Avenue, seven N zero six eight Pine Avenue, seven N zero five four Pine Avenue, seven N zero four zero Pine Avenue, seven N zero two eight Pine Avenue, seven N zero one four Pine Avenue, seven N zero seven nine Pine Avenue, seventeen W one twenty-two Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W one oh eight Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W zero eight six Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh seven oh Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh five six Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh four oh Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh twenty-four Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W one thirty-four Ardmore Avenue, seven N oh thirty-three Pine Avenue, seven N oh nineteen Pine Avenue, seventeen W one seventeen Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W one oh one Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh eighty-three Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh sixty-seven Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh fifty-three Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh thirty-nine Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W oh twenty-three Ardmore Avenue, seventeen W one sixteen Bryn Mawr Avenue, seventeen W oh eight oh Bryn Mawr Avenue, seventeen W oh six eight Bryn Mawr Avenue, seventeen W oh fifty-two Bryn Mawr Avenue, seventeen W oh thirty-four Bryn Mawr Avenue, and seventeen W zero zero eight Bryn Mawr Avenue. These parcels and certain rights of which are also to be annexed are all currently located in unincorporated DuPage County. Any individual present tonight who wishes to speak to the proposed annexation agreement and annexation will be provided the opportunity to do so. I will now open the public hearing. Mr. Cage, can you please present background information on the annexation of this property to the city and provide information relative to the annexation agreement before us this evening?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Hold on. Oath.
Did you swear that the test? Did you swear that the test was about?
I do. Thank you, ma'am. As I know a number of people in the audience, and the city council know, this is a property located on Route 83. It's approximately seventeen point seven six acres. It includes, I believe it's either thirty or thirty-one properties, obviously some right of way from Bryn Mawr, obviously Pine Lane and Ardmore, bordered on the west side by Edgewood. And the applicant has requested annexation. We have what would be a standard annexation agreement before you this evening. I know we have a number of people in the audience who've been to prior meetings at the CDC and also at the committee meeting. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation of the property? I have some cards up here. Let me start with Kelly Mullins, Fenton High School. Are you here for this topic or something else?
Something else.
Okay, then we'll move you to the side for now. Next, Christine Bending.
Good evening. I'm Christine Bending, and I live at seventeen West zero two seven Bryn Mawr. Good evening. There really isn't anything new that I can add to previous comments offered at the other public hearings. This annexation is going to be approved tonight despite our efforts to bring to light the misinformation and deceit exposed in Transwestern's presentation during the initial public hearing, and the inconveniences and dangers that the current plan for the Nippon Express warehouse will bring to the residents of Mohawk Manor, especially to those of us residing on Bryn Mawr Avenue and those living on Pine just south of Bryn Mawr. Some suggestions for changes to the plans were offered that could help alleviate some of the obvious dangers. I really hope they didn't fall on deaf ears, and that those who are involved with this whole process will realize the flaws in the current plans. I want to also remind the city council that once Transwestern's ploys at shock and awe were revealed to be happening illegally, as no permits were issued to remove visitation and allow trucks and oversized vehicles on a residential street, as far as I know, and I did make calls, they ceased that operation. Obviously, it was illegal. Why should we have to monitor these actions? My hope is that Wooddale City Council will communicate directly with the residents of Mohawk Manor in the future, biweekly, at least monthly, so we know what we can expect. Not just an email blast, but a sit-down meeting. For example, the demolition plan, I read it, I hope you have, calls for the removal of existing mailboxes. They're marked with an X. Mine is X-ed off. What are the plans for continuing the U.S. mail delivery to the current residents? I paid for a special anchor to hold my mailbox post. This might seem minor to some, but it's important to me. This is just one example of many questions that I and my neighbors will have. Please don't dismiss us or ignore us. I would like to thank Art Woods for taking his time to meet with a few of us and responding to ongoing concerns. It's very sad, however, that we had to reach out to you all when you knew of the annexation plans before we did. Finally, I have three words: shame on you. But you can fix this, meaning the bad feelings, the frustrations, and anger that is being experienced by many. Be the good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deb Palumbo.
Not necessary.
Okay. Julia Malik.
Can I talk later? Maybe?
Well, once we close the public hearing, then we're...
Okay, no.
Tammy Bending.
I'm done.
Frances DeJesus.
My name is Frances DeJesus. I live on seventeen W oh sixty-three Bryn Mawr Avenue in Bensonville, right across the street, right across from what's going on. Two days ago, we've been having all these trucks coming in and out and messing with our well water. My concern is that no one told us that they were going to be messing with the well waters. And coming to that, I brought, well, I brought water that's supposed to be my tap water. No warning whatsoever. Can I show this to you? This is my tap water. Can you smell it? That's my tap water. Do you want to drink it? Anybody here wants to drink this water?
No, we all have our own.
I'll try.
That's our tap water. This is our tap water. Pass it around. Here, writing sure to you. It looks dark when you put it in the white. That's our tap water. Anybody want to see it? You can smell it? And tell me what you feel about it. I thought we were supposed to be told when something was going to happen in our neighborhood. How am I supposed to, you know, cook, clean with that water? I have pictures of what we do when we flush our water. I'm very upset with what's going on in our... That's the flushing. It's nasty, and it smelt through the whole house. That's what I smell in my house through the whole entire house. Then, they said they were going to put gates up. This is our gates. This is the one on Pine Street, wide open. I see cars coming in and out all the time. I'm not a security guard, I shouldn't be. But I walk my dog, and I see what's happening in our neighborhood. They put the gates up, and supposedly it's supposed to be secure. I have no idea who they are. But those are the gates. Is that security? No. I see cars coming in and out all the time, slowing down, looking at the properties. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous. What we're going through in our neighborhood. I shouldn't be a security person. Do I have to call the police 24/7 all the time that I see an activity? That's not my job. But you know what? That little girl right there, that is my job to protect. That is my job. And I'm not liking what's happening in our neighborhood. I'm not liking it. The fence in front of my house has a door too to the property from the person who used to live there. They ripped the fencing out. It's wide open. Easy access for coming in and out. It's very upsetting what I'm going through, right in front of my house. What's it going to mean, that somebody coming into my house? Us getting murdered? I mean, we know what happens when there's empty lots. We already know what happens. It's not something that we, no one knows, or, oh my God, it doesn't happen in our neighborhood. It is. And everybody knows that all those properties are empty. You can see it. It's empty. It's dark, pitch black dark in our neighborhood. Well, in my area, because I live across from it. I have my lights on, but it's pitch black on the other side. People are coming down, I'm walking my dog. I have to have a light on my head so that people can see me. And they're just flying down the street. I mean, it's just ridiculous what we're going through. And I'm very upset that no one has no concerns about us. I'm very upset about it. I have not seen one patrol person coming through, making sure that our neighborhood is safe. I mean, there's so many children in our neighborhood. There's a park behind my house. I mean, it's scary, absolutely scary. That's all I have to say. And I don't think this is safe enough for anybody.
All right. Next, we have Michael Turco.
Hi, Bill. Nice to see you. I am concerned about my well. I live on seventeen West one one five Bryn Mawr. I have had mountain spring water. Twenty-eight years I've lived there, and I love my water. I don't even use the salt machine, you know. My water's great. I am not experiencing what you're experiencing yet, okay? But I am concerned that my well is going to get screwed up. Is there any way you guys can test it now and test it later to make sure we don't sue you for screwing up our wells? I think it needs to be watched and followed over time as this development happens, which is going to happen. It can't be stopped. But I love my water. It's great. I didn't know why. I thought well water was supposed to be bad, but I've been there twenty-eight years, and I don't even use, I don't buy any salt. I love my water. If it changes, I got it tested recently. But are you going to take my word? Shouldn't you do your own testing and then, in the future, test it again so that if we come and sue you, at least you have your own paperwork on hand saying, "We tested it," and it's still testing the same? Or do you want to take our word for it, that it has changed? I'm also concerned about flooding. Since they put the tollway in, Route 83 hasn't flooded anymore. My yard hasn't flooded anymore. They did a good job of getting rid of the flood problems there, but is this going to cause flooding now? That's another thing we have to watch for. And as far as Bryn Mawr Avenue, do you guys own it now? Are you going to be doing the snow plowing in the winter at this time? I park my vehicle at Bryn Mawr and Pine to pick up my daughter at the bus stop because it's cold. Right now, with all the trucks going in and out, us family members can't do that because there's so much activity going on that we have a problem with it. And, well, I think that's it. I think that's pretty much it. But making sure our water don't get contaminated is important. Oh, one more thing. On your website, City of Wooddale government website, you have a spot in development, Thorndale Corridor. On that, it shows you're putting up hotels, all this stuff along the tollway. I looked at that six, seven years ago, and I'm like, wow, this is beautiful. I love it. It's a great idea. Did you guys change your minds? You paid Lakota Group millions of dollars to do this study, and did you change your minds? Why, before we came here today, I checked again. It's still on your website that that is the plan that you have along the tollway. Did you change your minds? And if you did, get it off the website. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not bring up a card that wishes to speak? Okay. Okay, there being no further public comment, I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Need a motion in a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
All right, that closes the hearing. Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Council now commence deliberations on the ordinance authorizing the entry into the annexation agreement and to annex this property later in this meeting. All right. All right, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Still here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh, 2019. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Passes? Okay. Ms. Kelly Mullins, this would be your spot.
Good evening. Mayor Police, City Council members, Wooddale community. My name's Kelly Mullins. I'm a thirteen-year teacher at Fenton High School. I'm a social studies teacher. This year, I worked with freshman civic students to write letters to address problems that they felt were plaguing their communities. I have a stack of those letters here. I do have one student who came out, Miguel. He's not going to read his letter, but he's here. He's very interested in the civic process and local government. I think you'll find some levity in some of these letters, but some students are very concerned about the goose poop. Some students are very concerned about speeding down roads, but they go a little more in-depth. There's some letters that ask you to address the vaping crisis, they call it. There are some letters that ask you to take a look at intersections that they personally feel are unsafe on their walks to school. So I have those letters. I'm going to deliver them to you, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Do any other citizens wish to be heard? Matters now listed on the agenda before I move on? Okay, I have no written communicate. Under mayor's report, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. We will not be here for a meeting, so happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Murmas, city manager.
Just one item. Next week is, right now, the last week for yard waste collection. However, we are working with our waste provider and trying to get that extended for a week or two with all the weird weather we've had this fall. So we will be notifying everybody probably tomorrow. It looks good for the extension, but we'll start posting it tomorrow on the website and social media if we do get that extension. So it looks good. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And yes, there's a lot of trees with, still have a lot of leaves on them. Next, consent agenda. We have ten items. If there's no objections, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I'd like item ten to be removed.
Item ten. Wait a minute. Okay, got it. Okay, so, no other objections. We have nine items. I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion for the nine items?
Make a motion.
Second. Mike, Randy, roll call, please. Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
All right, that closes the hearing. Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Council now commence deliberations on the ordinance authorizing the entry into the annexation agreement and to annex this property later in this meeting. All right. All right, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Still here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh, 2019. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Passes? Okay. Ms. Kelly Mullins, this would be your spot.
Good evening. Mayor Police, City Council members, Wooddale community. My name's Kelly Mullins. I'm a thirteen-year teacher at Fenton High School. I'm a social studies teacher. This year, I worked with freshman civic students to write letters to address problems that they felt were plaguing their communities. I have a stack of those letters here. I do have one student who came out, Miguel. He's not going to read his letter, but he's here. He's very interested in the civic process and local government. I think you'll find some levity in some of these letters, but some students are very concerned about the goose poop. Some students are very concerned about speeding down roads, but they go a little more in-depth. There's some letters that ask you to address the vaping crisis, they call it. There are some letters that ask you to take a look at intersections that they personally feel are unsafe on their walks to school. So I have those letters. I'm going to deliver them to you, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Do any other citizens wish to be heard? Matters now listed on the agenda before I move on? Okay, I have no written communicate. Under mayor's report, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. We will not be here for a meeting, so happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Murmas, city manager.
Just one item. Next week is, right now, the last week for yard waste collection. However, we are working with our waste provider and trying to get that extended for a week or two with all the weird weather we've had this fall. So we will be notifying everybody probably tomorrow. It looks good for the extension, but we'll start posting it tomorrow on the website and social media if we do get that extension. So it looks good. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And yes, there's a lot of trees with, still have a lot of leaves on them. Next, consent agenda. We have ten items. If there's no objections, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I'd like item ten to be removed.
Item ten. Wait a minute. Okay, got it. Okay, so, no other objections. We have nine items. I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion for the nine items?
Make a motion.
Nine remaining. Second. Mike, Randy, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes. And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
Several reports, mayor. First one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for property commonly known as the Bryn Mawr Avenue addition to Wooddale eight hundred north, Route 83, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So if we annex this property, is that a raise? There was concerns raised tonight already about security of that site. Is that site going to be secure?
Who wants to take that? Mr. Cage or Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please. Could you introduce yourself and...
Yes, Kevin Mahoney, Transwestern Development. Yeah, site security certainly has come up multiple times, and so we have started to secure the site. You probably noticed the fencing along Bryn Mawr. We've wanted to close off Pine. We can't do that yet because it's not vacated. So the moment that we get, if and when we get this approved, we can formally close that off. We are going to work with our general contractor in the interim to set up security at night. I know that's a big concern, and it's not well-lit, so we're going to work with our general contractor to have somebody out there at night to make sure that there's not improper things happening. But yes, site security is a hugely important thing, and I think one more thing that's
and we are purchasing this property with TIF money from that area that was mentioned earlier. And the TIF, it's, we're purchasing the property for about four million dollars. We are renting the property back to the company who's there now for a couple of years while we figure out how we're going to redo our Public Works facility. In the long run, this will save the city approximately, the estimates are between ten and twelve million dollars by doing it this way, and that's why we chose to move forward with this. And we're, right, and being that we're leasing the property back, we'll get three hundred thousand dollars back from the renter. Did I cover everything, I think? Okay, just so people, in case people are wondering, I want to make sure we get that squared away. Item number three, an ordinance approving a text amendment to section seventeen point five oh three of the city's Unified Development Ordinance to include employment agency in the list of special uses allowed within the town center business district. Item number four, an ordinance approving the grant of a special use permit and major site plan review to allow the operation of employment agency at the property located at two seventy-three East Irving Park Road, Wooddale, Illinois. Item number five, authorization and execution of an IGA between the city and DuPage County for the bike trail maintenance of the Salt Creek Greenway Recreation Trail, middle drive to School Street section located at six fifty and seven fifty North Wooddale Road. Item number six, a resolution approving an agreement with Ara Valdevia Contractors for the painting and rehabilitation of Reichert Station Ground Storage Reservoir and Pump House in an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Item number seven, approval of final plat, payment to Newcastle Electric Incorporated for Potter Street Booster Station Generator Replacement in the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Item number eight, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and IHC Construction Companies LLC for fiscal year 2020 Wooddale Road excavation sewer repair in not to exceed amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Item number nine, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2019 Annual Audit Report from Sickage LLP. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Sir? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes. And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
Several reports, Mayor. First one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for property commonly known as the Bryn Mawr Avenue addition to Wooddale, Wooddale eight hundred north, Route eighty-three, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, if we annexed this property, is that a rate, there was concerns raised tonight already about securing that site? Is that site going to be secured?
Who wants to take that? Mr. Cage or Mr. Mahoney? Go ahead, please. Could you introduce yourself and?
Yes, Kevin Mahoney, Transwestern Development. Yeah, site security certainly has come up multiple times, and so we have started to secure the site. You probably noticed the fencing along Bryn Mawr. We've wanted to close off Pine. We can't do that yet because it's not vacated. So, the moment that we get, if and when we get this approved, we can formally close that off. We are going to work with our general contractor in the interim to set up security at night. I know that's a big concern, and it's not well-lit, so we're going to work with our general contractor to have somebody out there at night to make sure that there's not improper things happening. But yes, site security is a hugely important thing, and I think one more thing that's worth noting is, once we are officially annexed in, we can work with the City of Wooddale Police to enforce patrols in that area. Right now, we don't have that luxury.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Are the gates going to be locked that no one can get into those sites? Or are they going to be able to move those fence and get into that site?
Go ahead, Mr. Mahoney.
What's that?
Go ahead.
No, we can certainly secure them, yes. We need to do a good job of making sure that they are secure, that, you know, people can't just open them up. So, yeah, we'll make sure that they're locked at night.
No, no, no. Alderman Catalano.
How about the water situation? Has that been addressed?
I don't think he can answer that. Go ahead, Mr. Mahoney.
I can't, I, no.
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
To the extent there is any issue with the, with the wells, that certainly should be brought to the, the property is currently not annexed into the city. Once it is, to be brought to the, to the attention of the city, and they can look into it and see what the situation is, and if it is something that has been caused as a result of the development by the developer, it's a responsibility of the developer. So, that would be appropriate to do it at that time.
If I could just say.
Go ahead, Mr.
We work in a highly regulated industry. We work with reputable well companies that will be doing the well capping, so they're all licensed. So, it is very methodical work that we're doing, and certainly we don't want to make, you know, cause any impacts to anybody's remaining wells.
All right. That's, we had public comment already. Sorry. As the attorney said, as the attorney said. Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Again, unless and until the property is annexed, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over that property, as we sit here right now. If there's a. Well, ma'am, if you could let me respond to your question. If you have a problem with the water, you can bring that to the attention of the city. The question will be, how did that occur? What was the cause of that? And you will need to be able to address that with the city when you contact them.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Mayor police.
Okay, next, an ordinance annexing subject property, an ordinance annexing subject property commonly known as the Bryn Mawr addition, Avenue addition to Wooddale, Wooddale eight hundred north, Route eighty-three to the city, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That's my motion.
Your motion is second. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, an ordinance rezoning land from R-one, R-one Estate Residential to I-one Light Industrial, eight hundred north, Route eighty-three. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
That passes.
Next, an ordinance vacating Ardmore Avenue and a portion of Pine Avenue and Bryn Mawr Avenue, all located generally between Illinois Route eighty-three and Edgewood Avenue in the City of Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Next, a resolution approving the, next, a resolution approving the final plat of subdivision to consolidate lots for property commonly known as Bryn Mawr Avenue addition to Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That would be my motion.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Next, an ordinance approving a special use for a planned unit development for the Bryn Mawr Avenue addition to Wooddale Property, eight hundred north, Route eighty-three, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. That would be my motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Roll call. Got a question? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, item number seven, I'm going to ask to table that. I was told by the attorney that that was not ready yet, so I make a motion to table.
Second.
Peter and Eugene. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino? No report, Mayor. Thank you. Public works, Alderman Catalano?
I have one. Approval of payment to IHC Construction Companies LLC for emergency repair to the commercial street sewer in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. That is my motion.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business. All right, let's go back to item ten, an ordinance adjusting the City of Wooddale master fee schedule. I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Eugene? Questions? Alderman Messina?
This question would be for Brad. I'll wait until the room clears. Brad, can you answer a question for me?
Where's Brad? Are you ready, Mr. Wilson? Go ahead.
So, Brad.
Go ahead. Alderman Messina.
So, Brad, I wasn't here last week, so I missed some of this, but just for the folks at home, because I know even until I became finance chairman, I really didn't understand how these funds work. So, really, I want to make sure we take a step back. Can you take a step back and explain, number one, how this specific fund works? Number two, how we have gotten to where we are today? So, how this fund works, the objective of this fund versus like a general fund, how we've gotten to where we are today? We'll leave it at that. If you could answer those two?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, so the Water and Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund. It's also referred to in the CAFER as a business-type fund. So, the principle behind it is that it's supposed to operate as its own business and be self-sustaining, and it's supposed to be self-sustaining based on its rates and fees that it can generate if it were a private entity. So, for example, you know, there are certain communities that their water is provided by Illinois American Water or certain Jawa's, and so they have to operate within the rates and fees that they can charge. So, things like sales tax, the LGDF income tax, telecom tax, those aren't fees or taxes that a water system as its own entity would be able to collect.
Could you speak up? Sorry.
Microphone's on, right?
Best I know, yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so, things like sales tax, income tax, telecom tax, those aren't fees that a water utility as its own business would be able to charge a cess on levy. So, the principle behind the enterprise fund is that it's supposed to be self-sustaining based upon its fees, which in this case is the water and sewer fees. There are some additional fees that it collects, such as the tower lease fees for cell towers or cellular nodes placed on the water towers. But in a vacuum, the enterprise funds are, the rates are to be set to be self-sustaining based upon their own fees. So, the metro lot is in the same situation, the garbage fund is in the same situation.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
In layman's terms, the objective is essentially to keep it, we're not net zero, essentially, and forecasting is a big part of this fund in that, hey, if we are, if we're tilted and we're not at a balanced scale, is forecasting a big part of this decision-making.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And then the second, sorry, the second question?
Go ahead.
That other second question as well, which you kind of started to answer, was how we kind of got here today, kind of why we have no choice, essentially, at this point?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, so as I'm sure everybody's aware, we did the treatment plant project a number of years ago, and that's kind of really kind of set this whole thing in motion. There's approximately one point nine million dollars per year in debt service that has to be paid for the treatment plant, on top of the regular operations and maintenance of the fund. There's also a capital aspect of it. We're trying to target between one point three and one point five million a year in capital funding, which is effectively the annual depreciation amount. So, it's like the collective sum of the assets of the fund divided by the expected useful life, which we're trying to reinvest back into the fund on an annual basis to keep it healthy, keep it tight, keep it going. Over the past number of years, there were a series of rate increases. I mean, the chart that I had in the memo last week iterated kind of what the proposed numbers from staff and certain consultants were, and then what the council passed. And, you know, over time, between those rate increases, you know, essentially being less than what was recommended at the time, and the lack of, sorry, loss of consumption, which is kind of a double, kind of, it's a doubling effect, because not only is the incremental and marginal revenue over that period lost, but then as the consumption goes down, you're losing revenue on top of that as well.
Brad, I'm going to step in, because I know you're speaking in accounting terms. Some of the residents are more simple, like myself. So, five years ago, when we were raising rates to cover for the treatment plant, five years ago, we were about sixty-five to seventy million gallons more water used in the city, and in the last three years, we've, what, two years then, basically, the last three years was thirty-two million drop from that, part of that, part of that sixty-five million of the five years, but there was thirty-two million gallons dropped for three years. If we would have sold that water for the past three years, it would have equated to about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. That means we would have collected one point eight million dollars, which would mean the fund would be in better shape at this point, and that's why the increase is happening right now, because no matter what, we still have to pay for the treatment plant. And unfortunately, everybody's trying to save money with water saver faucets, toilets, washing machines, even, even the businesses, you said it, you told me yourself when we had, I go, where, where is this? Mostly residential, commercial, industrial, you said all three. Almost, it was almost a thirty-three percent split all the way down, I think, some, some close, give or take a couple percent. So, when you start losing, basically, and people are trying to conserve, of course, those things happen. Alderman Messina, go ahead, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, Mayor, you make a great point. I, I agree. So, the unintended consequence of all this is essentially less consumption than what we expected. What are you, what are we going to put in place, or what can you put in place so we have the new development coming in? Every new, as we get more development, which is phenomenal, and this is what we tell our residents, as we get more businesses online, we hope that will help, right? We'd be naive to think that these, these guys are not going to build a building, and it's not going to be very much this idea of conservation and sustainability, right? So, are you adjusting your forecast model to accommodate for that? Like, have we done that? Because we know every new building that comes up is not going to be specked like it was specked twenty years ago. So, have you done that, or are we going to do that?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure, so, the model itself assumes a continued downward trend in consumption, because the paradox of all this is that as rates go up, consumption goes down.
Okay, yeah.
So, then ultimately, you have to raise rates even more, and then consumption goes down. So, what we've done, though, is, you know, with, like Radcliffe, for example, we've kind of figured out what the maximum revenue estimate for that property would be, based on the number of units they have and an average consumption for that type of unit. Same thing with what's theoretically going next door, and then all these buildings as well. So, that is built in there, but unfortunately, yeah, but unfortunately, you know, we don't know the actual answer to the question until, until they come online. Like Radcliffe, for example, that's already kind of a little bit lower than what we had expected, you know, which I guess goes along with the clientele they have there. Perhaps they're not using as much water as somebody of a different demographic, so there are adjustments for that. And they're not a hundred percent full either, so.
Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
Brad, can you also touch on, for Alderman Messina and those at home, the funding strategy and perhaps a beginning of a switch in strategies to the fixed and variable and how that affects the rates as well with the forecasting?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Sure. So, currently, the rate model that the city's on is predominantly about ninety percent based on variable usage. So, that's where, when the consumption goes down, the elasticity of the revenue is more subject to shock with those changes in usage. Even seasonality, you know, if it's a, you know, hotter, drier summer, people are watering more. If it's like this summer, not too many people watering, because, you know, Mother Nature did it for us. And going to a more fixed cost model, because the, it costs, relatively speaking, the same amount of money to deliver one gallon to your house as it does a thousand gallons or ten thousand gallons to your house. Price of the pipe's the same, price of the pump's the same. Obviously, there's some incremental volume changes on electricity and things like that, but by and large, the system cost is the system cost. And so, one of the things we had talked about was going to more of a fixed cost model to account for those fixed costs of the system, which would help kind of prevent the revenue changes that we've, we've seen based upon the variable usage.
The predictability.
Good fellow.
Predictability. Sorry. Predictability would be better than it is today.
Correct. Alderman Wesley, you had your hand up? Or no, you're good? Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
A couple of questions. Brad, I called earlier today. I wanted you to take an average water bill of, of just an average house and show the residents how, how this would be calculated, how it's calculated currently. You know, the average resident just looks at the dot, bottom line, they're not looking at how the numbers are calculated.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, give me one second here, just gotta...
Well, I could tell you, it's very simple. At my house, it's about thirty dollars a month. But we use a lot of water. We're about ten, eleven thousand gallons. I'm waiting for the kids to move out.
You need a sensor.
Sure. So the, um, oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, what was approved last week at committee was four dollars fixed cost on the sewer, two dollars fixed on the water, and two dollars on the variable sewer.
No.
So the average consumption is around...
Seven dollars was on this fixed sewer. What'd you say? You said four.
Oh, well, my apologies. I know it was, it's seven, yeah.
Right. I just wanna make sure. I know the math is right up there, but people are listening.
Seven on the fixed sewer, two on the fixed water, two on the variable sewer. So the average consumption, still, you know, give or take around six thousand gallons. So the industry standard, and it's dropped a little bit, but we still kinda base it on three thousand gallons per person per month. Certain corners have it at twenty-five-hundred gallons.
Correct.
Per person per month, again, with the low flow and conservation type items. So this is the current build of six thousand gallons, just the water and sewer. Obviously, garbage is not changing, so I didn't include garbage.
Correct.
And then this would be the future composition of a bill at six thousand gallons. So the, the fixed costs are gonna be the same regardless. The water's staying the same, like you said. So it's the two dollars on the sewer, and so then depending on what your actual usage is, you could just plug your actual usage in to the two variable line items and then calculate that out to get where, where you would be personally.
So on six thousand gallons, you're looking at twenty-one dollars a month.
Correct.
Correct. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
So when the average homeowner gets their bill, I was kind of wanting to see a real bill. It, it shows they use three thousand gallons, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Just, so the homeowners, again, I don't think people really look at that. So they would just multiply those numbers out to see where...
Yeah, if it was three thousand gallons, it'd be one thirty-seven, forty-two. Six dollars less, because three thousand, three thousand gallons less, that's six dollars less for the three thousand gallons.
And...
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Other question I have is, you know, and I've had this question asked of me, you know, why do we build such a beautiful wastewater treatment plant? Was it, was it by, because of necessity, or was it because the city just wanted to put a pretty building up? I think maybe the city manager could answer that question.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
I mean, it's a good-looking building, but I didn't think it was that pretty. Still a sewer treatment plant. No, it was based on necessity. We did not expand the plant whatsoever. It needed to be rehabbed and fixed because it wasn't operating. So we did not do any expansion. We fixed the sewer plant to work and function into the future.
And for those residents who don't remember, so those two clarifiers, the original clarifiers that were there, were working at about, was it sixty-eight or seventy-two percent efficiency? And I remember asking the question, why don't we fix that? So they run at a hundred percent efficiency, and the answer was, being the way the plant was built, forty, almost fifty years ago, approximately, if you take one tank down, you take them all down, that means nobody's toilet is flushing. Out of business. That's, that was unacceptable, and not to mention, a lot of the parts were all special made because they were all obsolete and whatnot. So the plant is not any larger than it used to be, same. It actually now runs efficiently. All the tanks, if one of the tanks does run at seventy-five percent efficiency, amazingly, now they are all separated. We can take them down, the other ones still operate, we do not lose the treatment plant, and we can fix the other one as it's supposed to be. Alderman Jacob?
Two more questions. The other question I have is, we also had problems with the EPA coming down on the city, did we not?
Correct. There were, if, it was very simple. If we did not, I remember being in that, one of those first meetings, and we could not apply for the low-interest loan, and I said, okay. I, me being very new and very young, I said, well, we'll just wait till next year and then we'll start then, when we get, get the low-interest loan. The IEP, the gentleman over there goes, you can't. And I shut my mouth real quick and asked later, why can't we? He goes, because we're in violation, and if we don't start doing something now, we'll be fined. Oh, okay. Go ahead, another question?
And final question, we also have another wastewater treatment plant, which is ending its life, so part of the water rates, we have to save for that as well, because that has to be redone, as far as I understand.
And we're working to try and pay that one off as we go and space it out, I don't know, two or years or, their staff is still working on that, and they'll be coming to us. Those will be great discussions at CIP. I'm sure Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lang, and Murmas have great conversations for us coming up. Right, guys? Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes, Mr. Wilson. Senior citizen discount. So could you explain, you know, who qualifies, who doesn't qualify, and what's the average savings on that?
Go ahead. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the way the senior discount works currently is there's an age threshold, there's a couple other qualifying events as well, disability, certain former military qualifications, and a head of household. It's a little bit of an interesting wrinkle to that, but predominantly, it's the senior citizens. There's an age criteria and then an income criteria. The income's different for a one-person household or a two-person or more household. If they meet those criteria, the discount is, we do not charge them for the first twenty-five hundred gallons of water, and also half off the garbage. So as you can see, the ten ninety-three, so two and a half times that is thirty-six, thirty-seven dollars that they would save if they use up to the twenty-five hundred gallons.
And do you have, do you have the income verification? Do you know how much the income is for the...
Do you remember that, Brad, or...
I believe the single-family one is thirty-four thousand, five hundred, give or take, and the two or more is between forty-one and forty-two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Another one, Alderman Messina?
Yes, another one.
Go ahead.
So how would this work for those that, I have an irrigation meter, so I have sprinkler, and I have a separate bill that we get, we invested, my neighbors and I, in irrigation meters for our homes, in hopes that we could reduce that cost. So will people that have irrigation meters, will they see that same increase on that other bill? 'Cause I get two bills every month.
Go ahead.
Sure. So on the irrigation meters, since those are not billed for sewer, since the presumption is that the water goes into the ground.
Yep.
And not the sanitary sewer, the only increase would be the increase in the two dollars on the water fixed. So the monthly bill, again, the winter would go from three oh six.
Just the fixed.
Just to the five oh six. Correct.
Right. Any other questions? Were you gonna say something else, Mr. Wilson? I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes. Mike, Mike made the motion. Go ahead.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. And Gene, you were the, I have you down as a second.
I don't remember, Mayor.
No problem. And next, Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. There was one thing I should've talked to you before the meeting. So the Fly Quiet Committee meeting met this week, the committee, and basically, every week now on the ONCC website, they are, they're showing the Fly Quiet from two weeks ago. I think they're a week behind. So come tomorrow, be last week, and they're gonna try and improve it because there were some, some things like, it showed one night they stopped at three o'clock, but there was really, it was because it was that snowy, rainy event. So they're gonna work on that, tweaking that, and I don't know if it's possible. Can we actually link that kind of material if a resident wants to go online and look? Is that allowed? Mr. Bond or Mr. Murmas?
I don't...
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have a way of accessing the information.
Right, just, just that page, 'cause I do get those calls a lot. Hey, the other night, there was supposed to be Fly Quiet when we had the interim, and then all of a sudden, there was a lot of planes, and I, so I just email ONCC and, or CDA, and they email me back, and I reply to the resident. That was it. Alderman Woods, something else?
Yeah, just from the last technical committee.
Go ahead.
Pretty robust conversation about complaints. Wooddale only had nineteen residents or homes complaining.
Oh, we're down again. It was thirty-five the month before.
It, it's eighteen. I mean, obviously, there's more than eighteen complaints, because I complained ten or twenty times, and so do other people. So we need to get more people to call in and complain.
Actually, at the Fly Quiet meeting, a gentleman came up to me. He says he uses his computer. I go, is your address attached to it? Because honestly, we're getting thirty-five people. I go, so if, I go, if you're, if everybody's complaining a couple times a week or something, I mean, you wanna do more, do more, when it's bothering you, whatever. He sent me a link. He, I think he pays five dollars a month to be up to this thing or something.
Yeah.
But basically, I know there's more than thirty-five people calling me on this, and I, I would wish that people would start calling, please leave your address. So I'd love to see that number jump from thirty-five to a couple thousand. It would be beautiful. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, it needs to jump. But secondly, thanks for bringing up that app, because that was another topic that they somehow want to change how that app's treated, 'cause in their opinion, it's not fair that somebody who can afford to pay five dollars to the app is allowed to complain more than the less fortunate person who can't afford five dollars, and somehow somebody else is getting cheated. I didn't understand any of that logic, but they're doing anything they can do to reduce the number of complaints.
They're trying to work, they're trying to work the numbers in their favor, and if our residents, it's great, you can call me anytime. I'm sure the other Alderman will take your calls, but it would be nice if you called that hotline, gave your address, and we can see that number go up to even five hundred would be better than nineteen or thirty-five. Alderman Messina.
So I have a future item regarding this. Should I wait or mention it here?
Yeah, that's, that's committee. If you could tell the manager, we can put it on.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Is there still a budget for our O'Hare Committee?
Yes, there is. We use it with SOC to pay off JDA, who's actually, you know, at the table with this.
Do you use our three thousand dollars for the subcommittee?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
No, I don't, we, we don't really have that subcommittee anymore. So we budget money for O'Hare noise mitigation.
Period, yeah, right.
Okay, so when we had the ad hoc committee, we hit, were allocated a budget of three thousand dollars. Has that since gone? Mr. Murmas?
Well, we don't have your specific line item, but we have money to do something O'Hare noise related.
My idea was to buy, use that three thousand dollar budget, since we are not meeting anymore, to buy some of those as a program for those that want to come in as residents. And we use our budget, Alderman Jacob and I, as the chairman and vice pres, uh, vice chairman, you come in and you go through a program, and, and we will buy, we'll figure out a program, maybe to use that three thousand dollars. We won't be able to help many.
Buy a program for what?
For those, that clicker that allows for the automatic responses. Obviously, this can't happen now, 'cause most likely, if they have a change, that's a waste of money.
Well, that's...
But I would like to put that as a future item.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
And, and we'll have to keep an eye, because if, if they're gonna make...
The technology changes, right.
No, but if they're gonna make that change, and they're not gonna count that, then...
Yep.
You're, you know, basically, they want everybody to call. They're trying to make it as miserable as possible.
Yep. What's the phone number?
Oh, I don't have it on me. It's one eight hundred, I have it on my phone. You got it?
Yes, I have it. One eight hundred, four three five, nine five, six nine. I have it on speed dial.
Right.
You can also go to www.oherenoise.org.
Yeah, but when I go on there, it doesn't register my house. It's like it doesn't exist. So I call. It's ridiculous. All right. Next, under Stormwater Commission, Alderman Wesley.
I'll report. I'll do the next one.
Okay. All right. Approval of list of bills, Alderman Woods.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and six cents.
So we'll...
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? Alderman Wesley, any question?
I only have one on page five forty-four. Swale Creek, one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Swale, Swale Creek?
Yeah. It's, what, what's the deal with that?
Mr. Murmas? Hold on.
That would probably be, remember the infamous scientist we had to, we were required to retain for that project?
For how long?
Uh, I believe...
Three years.
So, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I'm sorry. Is this the second year now?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually the first reporting year we're required by the Army Corps of Engineers to do a monitoring program for three years, and this is the first year of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. We have no executive session, no items to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, we're adjourned.